We will start with our...
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, thank you, welcome everyone. Full meeting floor, we have a full board in place, so we're going to take more. Notice and... Full court, thank you. So we will start with, we have two police officers, one in. Kenny, do you want to give us a little background and introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce two new officers to the Garden City Police Department, very exciting. First officer would be Officer Eduardo Rodriguez, he's born in Brooklyn, has a large family, he's younger than four biological siblings and three adopted sisters. He began his service in the New York City Police Department 2014. He was able, fortunately, to serve the community for three years in the capacity of office patrol officer and member of the crime team. During his time with the NYPD, he was awarded several medals and commendations. He moved on to the MTA Police Department with a counterterrorism-based initiative before beginning an opportunity to come here in Garden City. Officer Tiffany Del Sanjo was born... Well, let's say what she was born in. But she resides in... She resides in Seaford, New York with her parents, Vito and Jenny. Where is born? Believe it or not. She has three siblings, Adam, Danielle, Victoria, Tiffany graduated from Mahogany College, had to receive a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, she worked at the law of Chautauqua for four years, went on to coach at the collegiate level after graduating. Tiffany joined the New York City Police Department on January 7th, 2015, New York City Patrol in the Subways, which I began in the Subways. Shortly after, she moved on to the Anti-Terrorism Unit. During her time with the New York City Police Department, she received a war for excellent police duty for a grand law she arrested in November 2015. Was recognized by Commissioner Baratin and Chief Foss of the Transit Bureau for a sexual abuse arrest in August 2016. She also received a war for marijuana police duty and cop of the month in June 2016 for a lifesaver rescue. I'm proud to present these two fine young officers for you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. If you can come on up and Tiffany, Mayor, if you may, we'll swear you in and we'll do some pictures. Have a party.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
For the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the most important sense of the Village of Garden City.
And the most important sense of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer of the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as Police Commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly appointed. Congratulations. That I support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the most important sense of the Village of Garden City.
And the most important sense of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
The duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as Police Commissioner of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly appointed. Congratulations.
I think you'll find we got a good group. It'll light most of the residents. Thank you for joining, appreciate it. Thank you very much. The office, they wouldn't let me sing and dance when I... I tried. Let's just give everybody a minute. Okay, we have a lot of swearing in, our volunteers here?
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we had three volunteers today. I'll start with Donald. Donald has been a, has thought of joining the Garden City Volunteer Fire Department to give back to his community, but has never felt that he had the time to give proper focus. Fortunately, the time has now come. His son is currently a member of the junior firefighting program and loves it. Therefore, he's looking to share the experience with him one day when he eventually joins the ranks. He currently works for New York Life Insurance Company on Marcus Avenue in New Hyde Park, selling life insurance as an agent. He wants to apply his skills, his professional skills and background to his everyday firefighting life. Donald, is Donald here? Okay, he couldn't make it, yep. You got Timothy? Timothy has had prior experience in fire and emergency relief services prior to joining the Garden City Volunteer Fire Department. Became a certified in emergency management through the Port Authority OEM Division with the Operations Department at LaGuardia Airport. He plans to apply the special training he received to his everyday firefighting operations. He just moved back into town after holding a job opportunity out of state. Prior to that, he worked for Contemporary Services Corporation while attending his bachelor's degree at American College. And third, Daniel. Joined Garden City Volunteer Fire Department in hopes to better serve his community and in a way to be part of something special and he can be proud of. He currently works as a powder coating manager and an office administrator at Advanced Architectural Grills on Denton Avenue in New Hyde Park. Wants to apply his knowledge learned through his job participating in building construction in his everyday firefighting operations. Those are our three members, Mayor.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Really, welcome and look forward to how can you help us out, really appreciate it. I'd like to get a... I'll make a motion now, Mayor, please accept the volunteer. Seconded by Kristi Hyer. Thank you very much, we really do appreciate it. Okay, moving on, we will now move to a portion of the meeting where we kind of have our department heads and village administrators describe some of the, what we think of the more interesting or important items on the agenda. Hopefully answer people's questions in advance. People can certainly ask questions later. Once it's started. I guess Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to call your attention, item number 15 on the agenda, Notice of Reproportation, Long Island Railroad Expansion Project. As part of the Third Track, Long Island Railroad Third Track Project, the State Department of Transportation is acquiring some property, village property, up on the north end of New Hyde Park Road by intersection with Clinch near the railroad station, the long strip of grass along the west side of New Hyde Park Road and the center section between New Hyde Park and Clinch where the Welcome to Garden City sign is. As you can see in the agenda item, they offered us $610,000 for the strip on the west side and $126,000 for the item. This agenda item is a acceptance of those terms but reserving the right to go back to a later date and challenge if we would like.
Thank you. Mr. B, if you could in 30 seconds, just sort of what's the legal process that this is operating, they condemn it and make a...
Yes, sir, that is correct. The MTA Long Island Railroad has the power of condemnation even over property that is owned by Garden City. They have exercised that power and have already taken title to the due parcels in question. However, having taken the title, what is left open is the price. The process involves making sure that the village gets fair compensation, reasonable compensation for that which has been taken. The execution of these agreements allows us to accept the check for what they have posed and what we have already cleared with our own independent appraiser as a fair and reasonable amount. However, it also allows us a period of time to rethink that if we chose and to argue with the MTA Long Island Railroad about that price. Should we make that election and choose to challenge the price, then it would go to court for determination by the judge and if the price were to be determined to be higher, the MTA would have to pay us the additional amount. If the price were determined to be lower, then we would have to give them a refund of the money's received. So in the absence of a challenge, this is the amount that we would take and as I said, which has already been validated by our own village appraiser.
And challenging it would be unknown period of time, legal fees, and uncertain outcome.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. Number eight. This is a program that will help our offices, it's a drug classification program, it's like a Google of drugs. When we encounter an incident that has a certain type of pills, it helps us identify it and then it also helps us get the proper charges, the proper court preparation, and it's a real good program and it's also was founded by two narcotic lieutenants. So we're very excited about that and we are paying with that as a forfeiture program. Also, number nine, the Hampshire House Contaminative Agreement. This is, allows to install wifi antennas which will help us with the taking the data from the cameras in town and bring them in to echo this one main server.
Thank you. This is part of our utilizing technology and...
Yes, sir, it's part of our security infrastructure project.
Thank you. Ms. Wu, could you, on numbers three and seven, could you just, what's our goal for this, this conference?
For item number three, this is the Annual Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference where they have a week-long training of various financial programs, courses available for all the municipal officers. So Deputy Village Treasurer, Ms. Darcia Palmer, will be attending three of those days during that week.
Also to your question, Mayor, number seven, Village Order will be there as well.
If I could ask about, and again, anyone trying to... Someone explain, Kevin, I guess, item ten, A and B?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Item 10 is an amendment to an existing study that we have going on at the, for the pool. This specific scope of work that's being added to Cameron Edge Daring's original proposal will deal with a sketch and a plan to do some corrective measures in the men's shower area. Also will lay out a drainage plan that we will be working in cooperation with the Public Works staff to do in the back courtyard area of the, of the men's shower and changing area as well to correct some drainage issues there that need to be done. The other thing that Cameron will be doing is looking at the status of our filter room. That was not part of the original project, but after further review, we think we should get a analysis of our equipment and mechanicals involved in those filter rooms so we can plan for the future and make any repairs prior to opening. That's what that agenda is.
Kevin, I have a question. Also talking about the pool, do you know what the rate rise will be this year?
Rate increase this year is about three and a half percent. We are planning to do that. It generates the balance sheet, gives us a revenue exceeding expenses projection again. This year, seventeen eighteen, we feel we're going to be coming in a positive nature, probably at least seventy-five thousand. And the budget we're presenting will give us twenty-five thousand positive, plus we have a fifty thousand dollar contingency, so we have the same possibility of revenue exceeding expenses.
Kevin, on 10, on the pool facility, when do you anticipate this work will be done? Will it be done in time for the opening of the pool?
Yes, these items, it is, is why we have it on this agenda, so that we can, we can get the drainage work done quite as soon as possible.
I think, I don't think I'm the only one. You know, I think some of this work is things that we thought should have been done, last time around we did the bathrooms, but I'm more concerned with, it's not just item 10, it's item 14, just generally, how do we make sure that we keep track of when these timeframes are on, are for maintenance bonds, that we make sure we collectively, no matter what the project is, not just rec, that we make sure that someone is on track and keeping track of problems we're having post-construction and we make claims when we can make them? I think that's a collective effort, but I don't even know if we need to centralize that in one place, so we don't lose out on the year period or the two-year period, or perhaps maybe we need to change any of our bidding processes to be two-year periods, I don't know. But I think somehow or another, we have to address that so we don't miss any claims that we should be making, so.
You can also, as part of the, sorry, as part of the contract, do an inspection in regular intervals, like a six-month, a nine-month, so that you, regardless whether or not you heard there's a problem with the drain or not, and maybe you just have to get off cycle. For all new projects have to have their kind of maintenance inspection at six to the nine-month period before the warranty is up. If it's a year, if we go to two years, then obviously you can extend out the inspection, but I would definitely advocate it's a good point.
And I think one of the things we've talked about, I think we've implemented already, this is certainly from the village administrator and from Joe, you know, collective effort was, we're going to centralize really any sort of construction, project-type work, instead of departments having control of that as the end user, they're really the customer, we're going to run things really mostly through our DPW and Building Department with obviously help from the third-party construction managers or whoever it is, however we set it up, but that's really the way it's got to be from now on. I know we've already started doing that, but that's the way we've got to do it. Anyways. Anybody else need to explain anything on the agenda?
Actually, I have a, sorry, I had a question on 19, the well. I'm looking at H2M's quotation here. They have broken out their price and they have contracted, or Construction Administration, and then they have Construction Observation, and I have to be honest, that's kind of a new one for me. And it's surprisingly, of course it's estimated, but it's the most expensive outside of design. The way they have it described here, it shouldn't really all fall into Construction Administration. For example, if they're going to review and prepare recommendation for contractors' progress payment, I would assume that they would watch over critical aspects of the well rehab, they would already have the progress meetings, right? They'd, they'd witness the construction, so I don't know if we're paying twice for contract, or for Construction Administration there. And Observation also kind of, I don't like that word on here, that's just like, they're taking the responsibility of it, they're just watching. So I, I know it's only an estimate and stuff, but then if this is really, you know, if this is site reviews or it's obviously them showing up on site and they want to be compensated for it, then I want to know how much each guy's getting for going, and it's not like a twelve hundred dollar a day per diem or something like that. It's just a little vague here. I'm sure they mean a site visit, but that's not what you glean off of their settlement, it sounds like we're paying twice for the site.
Well, their rates are governed by the hourly, so...
And that's great, but I'm sure they pay a senior guy a certain amount of money to show up on site, they got, you know, a junior engineer, that they pay him another dollar amount, and since they're going to bill you hourly, I think it should be in here upfront exactly how much they're going to pay, or we're going to pay for each guy per hour, do you know what I mean? And like, let's break it out, because this, up here, this, you know, perform periodic observations of construction, that's contract administer, Construction Administration, that's not Construction Observation, at least I'm not paying again for it, right? So, you know, if it's a site meeting, things, unanticipated site meetings or, you know, I'd expect at least two visits as part of the base contract, to be honest, right? But okay, we're going to pay him to go and do follow visits, it's got to be better mapped out than it is.
Should we take that as a joke?
Yeah, I hold it, it's just a little too vague and, you know, at least have a tickler say it's two visits and, you know, this is what we're going to pay everybody and it's not to exceed four thousand dollars, something like that. But just to have it open-ended, I'm not comfortable with that, I'm sorry, I didn't see, it's a lot. Sorry.
Hold on.
Let's make sure we stand, what's the...
We can admit to put it not to exceed on there if that would...
We can, we can... No, I think what Trustee Manero is saying is, is being pretty clear, is, you know, okay, what exactly are the steps that you're going to do with detail and not just sort of an overall, it could be a hundred sixty-five, it might be a hundred seventy-two. Give us a sheet, says exactly what you're going to do.
It's fairly standard too, you know, just tell me what you're going to pay your people to show up, how much we're on the hook per hour. And they're estimating seven thousand eight hundred dollars. I find that hard to estimate at this point if you don't know really how many site visits you have, you're going to need through the course of construction. And if they do, I would just make you part of the base contract and put it under Construction Administration. Do you know what I mean, why pay, why pay extra, why pay twice? Or at least we can negotiate, can we too, if you have to go back, I'll pay you a, you know, prevailing wage on whoever shows up?
I also have a question about 19, and that's the awarding bid. There were two companies that bid it, there was almost a hundred thousand dollar difference between the two, is the one that we're accepting a reasonable bid, can they do the work?
Yes, it's a pretty, it's a specialty area, well said, so, and Schultz is one of the leaders in that industry. We're comfortable with that, they do a lot of work for the bill.
Well, would we, is A, Trustee Manero, separate out from the B, the actual attractive? Do you need to approve B at this point, or does this all wait till?
Well, assuming, assuming the bid work, or the work was bid out properly.
Yeah, the work was bid out properly, I see. I mean, yeah, I think if you can accept A and B, then I can go back to each joint and have them...
Yeah, I still might...
...start the contract for state.
So I'm happy to go ahead with the work that you bid for, but that part in particular of their contract...
I would like to get this project started, we, we've been well down now on the last summer for a long time.
And for the design and for the documents, I get all those charges, I just, I don't like Construction Observation, but...
Would it make some sense to have the contract spell it out?
Yeah, no...
Would that be the way to do it?
Yeah.
We'd vote on it, but subject to a contract that in detail spells out how they get paid, no?
Subject to approval by these, right?
Specifically Phase Four of their contract.
You can do it not, not to exceed that much, I guess.
This is just the H2M, H2B?
Yeah, it's really, it's really Phase Four, that's what...
No, I'm just looking at the agenda part.
Oh, right, sorry.
A and B we can, yeah, see, make it subject to further review of the contract specifying specific rates and...
In Phase Four, I think, rates in Phase Four.
Can we pass it in subject to our review?
You can, you can, you can.
My understanding is the board is saying that the flat dollar amount is an acceptable cap, but you want a breakdown of how they arrived at that figure. And I, my answer to you is that yes, you can approve the contract subject to a document being produced which reflects the calculation of the rates producing that number, which document would be subject to the approval of both the Director of Public Works and myself?
And I think it's also a more definition of the services.
What if I think seventy-eight hundred, are we collectively thinking seventy-eight hundred dollars exists excessive?
Then in that case, it becomes tougher to approve the item subject to a discretion or exemption.
Is there any reason we can't do this, assuming it's fine at the end of the month, the 28th, is that our next meeting?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
The captain who's, 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 what's the time? Because once the projects approved, I mean, to get contracts in place, insurance in place, even though you were approving the bid, that approval, the acceptance of the bid, is still released two or three weeks before we can start construction, if the contractor is ready to start construction at that time. So, you know, we're getting closer to the spring, and we like to have the well back online, so, and you lost time, it's not going to...
So let's do it not to exceed that, for that, but...
A better definition would be...
And then define, because it doesn't mean we're spending, it just means we wouldn't exceed that. The object of this exercise would be to spend considerably less.
Same point, I agree with your point a little bit, what are we then making a point going forward, any future projects, anything else that...
Yeah, I've never seen any, I mean, I've never seen this in a while.
Okay, this is your wheel, I'm agreeing with you.
I agree with that, it's a very, it's a very interesting way to put, you know, for a diem for a site.
I'm also involved in all the projects in the village, so... They are the primary Village Water consultants, so, we do have an ongoing contract.
We want to make sure we tighten up everything. Okay, so I guess the motion is to accept it with a provision that is not to exceed 22.9?
Well, it's the seventy-eight hundred in Phase Four.
Oh, for the, not to exceed seventy-nine hundred for the Phase Four. Cameron, Peter, do you have enough to write that?
I believe we do.
Verbally? I guess Trustee, you do, well, then I add that again, so, okay. Any other agenda-related questions or... Any other agenda-related questions or discussions from your staff or?
Joe, can you just explain number twelve, please?
Yes, um, this is, I'm looking for additional funding for our directional drilling contract. Aaron Cable does directional drilling for us for a number of areas, most frequently is for lighting, the street lighting. It's an area that was underfunded when we did the budget last year, when the budget was put together last year. And will be addressed going forward this year, where we will have enough funds in place for the entire year.
I mean, I think as, while I've been in the board, this.
It happens every year.
It was budgeted every year, in prior years, early year, about midway. You would be asked as a board to put additional funding. It's been corrected in this year's budget for the full year, but we need more money than we traditionally funded there.
So are we gonna take like a, you know, three-year kind of average thing like we do with snow? Miss Wu, you're okay with this approach? It's a better approach than half-budgeting?
Well, yes, absolutely. Mr. Francisco corrected in the budget that he's proposing for eighteen.
So this is streetlights, electricity for streetlights?
It's directional drilling, they were able to drill it out on the gate for traction.
What else would you?
Um, I mean, I don't know what else we can use, mostly, mostly for electrical, conduit, conduit and.
Thank you. And I just have a minor question on number twenty with our knife sharpie man. Probably has been doing this for, who knows how long? But just on my own personal, I never know where he is. I don't even know when he comes down the street, I don't really care, but could he just give us a, could he just give us a schedule where he's like gonna be in the parking lot of Nassau Boulevard on this Saturday, or over at the dump in that parking lot for that Saturday, I mean, who knows? Who talks to this person?
You must show up once a year, I don't know.
Cameron, it's not. Could you ask him, seriously, if he could kind of like, yeah, you know, ask him, yeah, I think, right? Maybe suggest to him, tell us you'll be, you know, in this parking lot Saturday between, you know, nine and twelve, and you might get more business, at least it's more of a service.
We're outside when we have our trustee.
There you go. I come Thursday, and we'll get more people, we'll get more people, there you go. Good idea. I'm gonna show you my people, we want people to ask, and I'm saying.
We need, we need sharp knives for these.
Cameron has one speed dial. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now more generic kind of questions or issues that maybe trustees might have or. Just over, you guys, you're running the pool rates. Is that across the board, three and a half percent?
Yes.
Every group?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a couple questions. What is the total amount of revenue that we bring in, to the board?
Um.
About a million five, one five fifty-four.
Are you telling me that we're gonna increase that by three and a half percent, million five?
No, that, memberships is a portion of that. We have other, we have a.
All right, so what are the members' pay?
Um, I don't have that number exactly in front of me right now.
Over.
Well, it's probably, the other revenues is about two hundred and fifty thousand, about a million two fifty.
Okay, so we're increasing rates by approximately forty-three thousand seven fifty. And do we have any idea how much our expenses are going up? Estimated expenses for the year?
Well, budget, year to year.
From last year to this year?
Um, I think about, I'd be guessing, I have to get my, I don't have a budget.
Make a bold guess, thirty thousand, what do you think? How much, how much are pool expenses going up?
About a hundred thousand.
Okay, so maybe I'm missing something. So if our pool expenses from last year to this year are going up a hundred thousand, and if we're raising our rates by only forty-three thousand seven fifty, we're basically not raising enough rates to keep up with the increased expenses of the pool.
We have a, we have a line item here contingency that's part of that expense. We just experienced a full year where we expended, so we're gonna have to put that in in the track as well.
Okay.
The same, it was a sixty-two.
Well, I mean, what I'm concerned about is that, as I've looked over the history of the pool since nineteen fifty-seven, one of the problems I think that we have is that we have not consistently increased the rates for many years to keep up with the increase of expenses of the pool. And I do not wanna sit there and increase the cost on any residents, but the reality of it is that the pool has to be able to enter price, has to be able to pay for itself. And the bottom line is that if I'm sitting here looking at the pool, it has not done that traditionally in retirement. There have been too many years that we've given raise rates, there are too many years we've raised rates that are not keeping along. So, that formula, that's myth, that's simple myth. So I, I, you know, I'll look, I'm gonna look at it deeper, but.
Yeah, I would like to.
I mean, that's, 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 that's math one-on-one.
Okay, isn't this a more appropriate conversation than during the budget discussions? Where we have all the information before us as opposed to, you know, picking things up now? I would just rather wait until we get all the information and then we can make a determination as to whether three and a half percent is the right number in terms of increases. I do think that there is a number that, once we go past it, we're kind of going to see a dive in the number of memberships, I think we have to keep that in mind.
I think that's right.
Five minutes.
That's, that's a good point, I, you know, we have, as you say, Trustee, we have, as you know from your work with the commission, we have all the historical data. There were many years that the fee increases were not high enough. Those created years where we did not have revenue to receive expenses. But we think we're on a much better path now. This current fiscal year and the year going forward, which we'll be able to get into some detail within during the budget discussions. But yes, the, we have the data that shows when we do consider the fee increases, you know, we will take a dip the following year. And we have kind of, we've leveled off with the family category, we have about fourteen hundred families, which is significant, it's a good number, but it's a difficult number for us to grow. We see a lot of families going from taking a family to making a discretionary decision within the household to take a family to, we see that, that shows us that.
Cameron, I understand that, I agree with John, that this is something, we have to do more detail in the budget, but the reality of it is, this is supposed to be an enterprise fund. This is a fund that's basically supposed to fund itself. The bottom line is, we just spent how much redoing the bathrooms, we're helping?
It's about eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars we've just spent to redo the bathrooms that needs to be done, and again, I'm a firm believer, we own the pool. So therefore, it absolutely needs to do this. But the reality of it is, is that when the pool is looking to sit there and to make improvements or to change things or to improve things, an enterprise fund has to have excess cash, build up the money, save the money, just like anybody does in running a business, and then you afford to pay it. And the bottom line is, for too long, as you know, this has not gone on. And the bottom line is, is that this has to be corrected. So when we do go over the budget, we've gotta have a clear understanding of what exactly it is.
Anyone, any other general types of issues, their hearing from neighbors or POAs or anything that they wanna ask about? No? Good. Okay, um, so now we move to, any citizen comments on the agenda items? These are on agenda items, please. I mean, you open question. Okay, I guess we'll have, we get a motion to approve the minutes of January eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Trustee Makinos makes that motion, seconded by Deputy Mayor DiMaro. If I can get a vote on that. All those in favor? Yes, unanimous, Ms. Altman, thank you, we report that. Okay, so now we have our formal agenda, we have some appointments. We do this all at once, or do we do this individually, Mr. Menino?
Well, the points have been done, a single resolution, the appointment has listed on the agenda. We can already, we may have been in the.
I get a motion to make the appointments that are described in the agenda under A, B, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Trustee Delaney makes that motion, Deputy Mayor Truvey seconds it, can I get a vote? All unanimous, thank you very much. Now we move to our consent calendar. Anyone like to take something off the consent calendar? We are modifying, um, which one was that?
Nineteen.
Nineteen C would be inclusion of a, not to exceed seventy-nine hundred dollars for Part Four.
Phase Four.
Please, please.
I'm listening to break down.
Yes, and listening to you.
I just wanna make one note, Deputy Mayor, that in connection with item ten, I am going to recuse myself in connection with that item only.
Ten A and B?
Yes.
You wanna do the ruling instead?
I'll just say.
With that, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar for Trustee DiMaro recusing himself from ten, ten A and B?
Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, sorry. And the modifications of nineteen C as settled by Trustee Menino. Trustee Makinos makes that motion, can I get a second? Trustee Hyer seconds that, all those in favor? Unanimous to be approved, thank you very much. Okay, um, what is next? Now we are going to move to our little work session. We have the folks from Winthrop and the ambulance service. If you guys wanna come up and start your presentation, that would be terrific. Just for those who don't know, we have decided as a board to certainly consider looking into utilizing a third-party vendor for our ambulance service, and that's what we're going to do. We had a prior presentation a few weeks ago, Winthrop and their ambulance service. We have a presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mary Doyne, my name is Charles Strain. I am the chairman of the board at NYU Winthrop Hospital, and have been for the last twelve years. I'm also delighted to tell you that I grew up in Garden City, went back here in nineteen eighty-six with my family, and I've been here ever since. The ambulance contract with the village is extremely important to Winthrop. The what, that's funny. Ambulance agreement is, is important to Winthrop. Relationship that we have with the community here goes back more than a hundred years. We've been great neighbors, and we've been great providers to the community here. We welcome the opportunity to continue to do so. Some of my colleagues, Joe Michaels and Justin Burke, will be giving a presentation. But I think from the perspective of the community, it's important for the trustees to understand we've, are responding to the concerns that we've heard from the village in terms of both cost and utilization of, trying not to utilize existing policemen to help in the ambulance process, which we think is, as we understand, very critical to the village. As I said, we've been great neighbors here, we've got a significant presence in Garden City. Got a big cardiac program on Franklin Avenue, we've got a big pediatric program on Franklin Avenue. We are, as you may know, half-owners of Health Traxx, which is an active facility here in Garden City, a great resource in the community. As you also may know, we affiliated with NYU Langone in April of twenty seventeen. We are delighted with that affiliation. NYU Langone is a world-class institution, and like Winthrop, is relentlessly focused on patient safety and the quality of care that we provide to our patients. Getting them there in a time of emergency is absolutely critical. We think we've got a very compelling proposal for you to listen to tonight, and we welcome the opportunity to present it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And also I'd like to just thank, of course, Trustee Hyer, he kind of led the charge on getting this proposal. I don't mean this in particular, but the cancer front, so thank you, Trustee.
Thank you, good evening, and thank you for having us here to offer this proposal to you. My name is Joe Shields, I am the clinical coordinator for Emergency Ambulance Service. I've been with them for four years, prior to that I was with LifeStar Response, about four years ago as I mentioned. EAS acquired LifeStar, I had been at LifeStar for fifteen years in a similar role, clinical coordinator. I act as a liaison between some of the facilities, Winthrop, some nursing homes, other hospitals, and our medical staff. Emergency Ambulance Service is a New York State certified ambulance service. We were formed in two thousand two, and over the years we've expanded through acquisitions and mergers. Our operating territories include Nassau, Suffolk, and Queens. Our offices are located, our headquarters essentially is in Bohemia, and we have a base in Freeport and a small one in Hampton Beach. We do have the ability to transfer patients to their requested hospital as long as they are medically stable enough, otherwise we do have to take them to the nearest appropriate hospital. We do have all the necessary insurances for both our vehicles and our medical providers. We employ over two hundred and twenty-five providers at the basic level, the critical care level, and paramedic level. In addition to the state certifications that our providers hold, there's additional trainings that we offer and require of them on medications, equipment, and protocols, which is outside of the norm of emergency medicine, if you will. Our paramedics are trained in the use of ventilators, additional transport medications, and other specialty equipment, not routinely found on emergency ambulances. Our supervisors and management team have over decades of experience, as I mentioned in my tenure. Randy Walmart, our CFO, began his career in EMS thirty-something years ago, and our management team all have over ten years' experience. Our quality assurance and quality improvement program is led by our medical director, Dr. Joseph Bove. He is chairman of the emergency department at Methodist Hospital. He's also the vice chair of the New York City Green Act. Through our providers' care reports and assessment of their skills, we ensure that they're meeting our standards and our patient standards of the highest quality of care. LifeStar and Winthrop Hospital have enjoyed a partnership of over twenty years prior to the acquisition through EAS, and EAS has continued this partnership, and we provide the hospital with specialty ambulances, equipment, program, and transport services. Some of these transport services include the physician-related practices around Long Island, where we will bring patients from those practices, from the east end of Long Island to Winthrop, from Queens to Winthrop, and so on.
Justin, can you talk about the intro?
My name is Justin Burke, I'm the director of external affairs for NYU Winthrop Hospital. Thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to come in and present. This situation with Miniola, the village of Miniola, is a little different than currently right now with Garden City, although they were looking to continue on their ambulance coverage. They were looking to continue on ambulance coverage through a volunteer ambulance corps. Unfortunately. Unfortunately, what happened was volunteers just being what it is, weren't, were not able to get to calls throughout the working day. So between the hours of 9:00 to 5:00 or 9:00 to 6:00, there just wasn't enough people to get a bus out. So I had worked with the, the village board, the mayor, the trustees, as well as the volunteer ambulance corps, and essentially put together a program with the help of our contracted ambulance company. And we now provide a, well, a paramedic that's on call 24 hours a day. So this way, they can cut down on times that would be, the times of, uh, to make the call, to take the call. Their, their call time at that point was somewhere between 9:00 and 12 minutes, if I remember correctly. We were able to get that call time to cut down to seven minutes, I believe. Yeah, there you go. Significantly up to seven minutes per call. Which obviously the, we, NYU Winthrop Hospital is in the village of Minneola, so just like Garden City, we wanted to be neighbors and, and help out the best that we could. By allowing us the opportunity to work with them, it was great because M Act was basically going to close the doors. They ultimately ended up, ended up getting recognized by Nassau County as well as, you know, this was in Newsday, about how we were able to cut the response times down and continue on with great work in the community.
Thanks, Justin. So what we would like to propose to the village is a dedicated ambulance, death ambulance, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This ambulance would be dispatched by the village's police department, and the reason for this is it would be a simultaneous activation. So the ambulance and the police would respond at the same time. There would be no lag, as there would be a handoff if it were given to another agency to be dispatched. On weekdays between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, we would have a second ambulance in the vicinity of both the village and Winthrop Hospital, as we provide a large number of services for the hospital. By utilizing these services, the village would not have to send a police officer to drive the ambulance, as you currently do, and sometimes send a second officer to retrieve the initial officer. This would allow the village to keep the officers within its jurisdiction with the ability to provide the services in a more timely manner to its residents. The EAS ambulance would not leave the village for any mutually calls to neighboring towns or villages. In the event that there are multiple calls beyond the capacity for which our ambulance would be able to respond, we would have you utilize the county ambulance, which you currently use. EAS will provide the maintenance to the equipment, the ambulance, and we'll stock and restock the ambulance as needed. In the event that the village has a fire, we will provide an ambulance to stand by on the scene for any patients require treatment and transport or any other responders. And if you have special events occurring within the village, we would be able to make arrangements to have an ambulance stand by for that as well. EAS is willing to provide CPR and AED training for the police officers of the village at no cost to the village as well. Some of the benefits of the village within the city, significantly decreased response time. We would have a dedicated ambulance to the village itself. It would be a steady invisible presence within the village. Our specialty, specially trained paramedics, potential in the use of specialty equipment and medications, not routinely used in typical emergency ambulances, could be used for non-emergency transport for your residents if they so desired. A more efficient use of your manpower and vehicles, and greater safety for the residents and the security of the residents. Thank you.
Do you have questions?
Yes, this will make sure. When you talk about, when you talk about transporting patients to, on a non-emergency basis, that would not be you, that, that would not happen in the ambulance based in the village. You would bring another ambulance in to do that work.
That is correct.
Do you know what the, like, what's the average response time on Long Island ambulance response time? You see, you got it down to seven minutes in Minneola, but what's the average? I, I Googled, I think the national average is like 15 minutes, but that's places in Montana where it's 56 miles away, but...
What, New York City?
Yeah, well, no, actually, actually, the city was nine minutes. So that's actually why I'm asking. So in a, in a municipality such as ours, roughly same size, da-da-da, what, what abouts the average you figure? You guys know that answer?
I don't know the answer. I can tell you as a volunteer, as well as both a firefighter and a paramedic, I'm the only paramedic in my fire department. So me being here would not have any coverage, well, a paramedic in my camp. On East Isle, our average response time is probably in the range of nine minutes. We do not use any paid staff. It's for a volunteer. The majority of the volunteer services in both Nassau and Suffolk and Avenue are always paid people. Mainly during the day, I'd say probably 6:00, 9:00 to 6:00 PM, and weekdays, as the volunteers are generally at other jobs. Most people have multiple jobs these days, so my guess would probably be in the range across the island of somewhere nine to 12 minutes. I think that'd be a fair guess.
How many, so there should be two persons on the crew?
Yes, there would be.
Both paramedics?
One would be an EMT basic, and the second would be a paramedic.
And how did you come up with, um, sort of second ambulance availability between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM? Is that based on sort of our statistics of what we use, or is that something else?
Generally, the highest call volume is during the day, traditionally across the island, so we felt that would be the appropriate coverage for the village.
During those off-hours where we only had one ambulance on the call, if we needed a second ambulance, we would then require a police officer. Right, but we would then have to have a police officer.
Yes, for a second call. Commission, does that, the 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM, is that jive? I'm just thinking, anecdotally, I'm thinking, okay, all these kids on these fields on Saturdays, is that really going to get more calls? Or is it 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
We get a surveyable calls, roughly that is, in the generic view, 66. I mean, there are some, no, when Smoos says there are some fluctuations in that number, there's going to be 66 when people start waking up. That's when a lot of times the calls start, and easier in the evening it starts slowing down. But generally, in most ambulance services, the client time will be considered 66.
And where would this be? This is a decade, we just, it would be sitting at the hospital? How, how is it dedicated?
No, it would be in the confines of the village. It's going to be sitting in the village. So potentially outside or the police station or wherever you'd like the, the ambulance to be.
We have a facility now, right? Is it the waterworks?
In Nassau County, houses ambulance, that's the waterworks.
Just an office.
It's basically a garage where they will, and a bathroom. I think that's basically what they have.
Yeah, the idea would not be to leave from the hospital, because then that just adds travel time to a potential work.
I have one question.
You can have two.
How you doing? I'm Chief Gal from the Fire Department. I have a question. Specialty equipment, what exactly is that that you're referring to?
Infusion pumps, mechanical ventilators, medications that are not traditionally used in the emergency setting for transport. There is a resident in town who is on a constant infusion that we transported numerous times to and from the hospital, so we would be able to accommodate their needs.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's my other question. Thank you.
Excuse me, gentlemen. The, with the ambulance, have the capability to speak to a doctor or nurse during transport in case the patient needed something more immediate than getting to the hospital? I know you're right around the corner, but does that capability exist?
Yes, it's required actually by the state.
It is required by the state. And is there any planned video capability down the road, or is it, it's basically radio communications?
Currently is radio. I don't know that we have any plans immediately to go to a video feature.
The, can you just explain to me, I'm confused about the paramedic, AEMT, and EMT. Are they, is the AEMT a standard paramedic, or is that, is there a higher advanced level?
The highest level of certification in the state is paramedic. Below that is a CCR, critical care. That's being phased out by the state. The state has stopped allowing original courses of the critical care level. They are trying to go to a national standard, and that level is the AEMT. Nassau County, I believe, has already initiated one of the first classes for that certification level. They will not have the capabilities that the critical care EMTs do.
Is this, are these owned, operated by Winthrop, or is this a third-party provider that you guys contribute to?
Emergency ambulance service is a partner of Winthrop. We are privately owned company.
Are there any other municipalities besides Minneola that you currently operate with?
No.
So they're clear, of course, to be the second?
Yes.
Okay, I guess no further questions? All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, before we, uh, go to citizen's comments, I forgot to mention one thing right there.
Absolutely.
What happened was, in the village of Garden City, we happen to have a village-wide web alert system. This way, it enables residents to have an idea of what's happening in the village and we get messages out. And I just wanted to recognize Carissa Giordino, if I said that correctly, and also Karen Boltman. Those two people have actually taken this as a focus, and within the last year, they have pulled a true quality amount of residents who are on it. I just wanted to recognize them for their efforts. They come up with a lot of good ideas, and I appreciate it. So, thank you very much.
Okay, now sort of our more open-ended portion of the meeting. Any citizen comments on any various topic? To your concern? Yes, sir?
Leo Stimmel, Huntington Road. Welcome to the feebe for residents on the ambulance service.
Your insurance company.
Thank you. And I hope the, if you do make a contract with them, we have a telephone number to call if they didn't come within seven minutes. On second item, Mr. Mayor, on item 14, you, you were saying that you wanted to be sure that, that we're monitoring the contracts, and I understood you to say that if, if, for example, the roof started leaking before the guarantee was up, you wanted to make sure that we're on top of it. I hope you follow through with that. As you said, you work with, with all departments. I think it's a very good idea. And finally, I wanted to congratulate Deputy Mayor Truvay on your recent runoff election. I was excited that you won the reelection, because I remember last year at the budget meetings, you commented several times on items in the budget that were of concern to you. And one of those items, I seem to recall, was the police department overtime. So thank you for your vigilante eye. I, I very much appreciate that, and congratulations on, on your election. And as part of that, one of the things that concerned me about that election was the fact that that you appeared to have been ambushed. It seems that your opponent did not go before the nominating committee. And now, I, from what I can gather, he did follow the rules and regulations and bylaws of his property owners association. But I think it, it raises a concern, in me at least, about people who don't follow through with what seem to be fair procedures. So I'm hoping that all the trustees will make sure that the bylaws in their own property owners association allow for, make sure that people can't be ambushed, that there's an adequate time.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Stimmel. We represent the village. We don't represent the POAs. That's up to the boards of the POAs to make sure that their bylaws are correct. And whatever it is they want, we are the village. POAs are not the village, so we don't get involved in that. So we should go back to your POA, and I know what the east says, or the west, or center, or whatever. They should make sure they're comfortable with whatever their bylaws want to say, or should say, or can say. That's not us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but don't, don't all of you have a great impact on your project?
Sir, we, we do not get involved in the POAs. That is not our job. They are not part of the government, okay? So the POAs and shelves should take care of their bylaws. They are not part of village government. We don't tell them what to do.
Thank you, Mr. Stimmel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lloyd. I live on Stewart Avenue in the state section. This is the first time I've been to a trusty meeting, so I apologize if I don't understand anything. I'm here to ask about the recent discussions of speed cameras and the whole traffic situation within Garden City. I'd really like to request that we put this front and center as a high priority. I think that it's just, it's a terrible situation that we have. Stewart Avenue I live on is, I mean, it's, there are accidents every week. I reviewed the police activity report from 2016, and either on Stewart Avenue or across street with Stewart Avenue, there were 382 car accidents, and I think that's just ridiculous. I myself was a victim. I was trying to turn into my own driveway. I was rear-ending. My car was totaled. My children had to witness me going through an accident, and they were hysterical. And I really would like to have more discussions about what are we going to do? And I really would like this to, changes to occur now and not in two years, because we're hemming and hawing about what's the best thing to do. And I get that it's not easy, and I understand Stewart Avenue, for example, is a county road. We don't have the ability to make all the changes that we want to without first going through Nassau County. But I'd really like, a lot of pressure from Garden City to say, hey, you know, we got to do something, because our citizens are, are getting impacted negatively, so, thank you.
It's actually worth saying. We, we know speed cameras aren't the end-all, be-all. We know that, okay? But we have all been hearing these complaints and seeing accidents and being part of accidents and et cetera for a long time. It's not a perfect solution. For example, where you live, we actually were able to get, you know, people talk about, oh, take other steps, uh, speed coming. That yellow flashing light, we've tried that, okay? Doesn't work very well, okay? So we have tried other things. We've thought of many other things, okay? This is our attempt to maybe address a bunch of other issues, okay? And I know, you know, where our police are situated and how much they control neighborhoods is another issue. We're trying to deal with that. Maybe this solves it, maybe not. The police aren't going great. We're not hiring less police. You know, if we could, we hired 50 more, but we can't. We just can't. And you can't afford it, we can't afford it. That's reality. So we have to try and use technology where we can to do specific things. The police will still be patrolling. Maybe they'll actually see more going on, instead of being stuck on the side of the road for two and a half hours trying to catch, you know, a person speeding and blah, blah, blah. Again, it is not a perfect solution. We have all voted on this. We've all thought about this. It's not just this board of eight. The prior board voted on this. This has been kind of, we've been trying to come up with this for like two years, two years now.
I think you have to point out that we don't have the power to install these speed cameras without an act of the legislature. So, well, we'd look, we'd do it tomorrow morning if we could, but we can't until the legislature acts on it.
And we've asked our residents who are okay with this, and again, we know it's not perfect, and some of us may actually get a ticket. You have to write to Senator Hannan and Representative Rock and tell him you support this, get your neighbors to support it. And of course, not everyone will. We get that. The letters are on the website, or just email them. It's a simple email.
Have, have traffic lights been considered on Stewart Avenue?
We have traffic lights.
But there, there are like some stretches that are, you know, just...
But there, there are like some stretches that are, you know, seven, nine blocks, and other stretches that are like one or two blocks, and...
We've tried different, various things, for example, at the corner of Nassau and Stewart, you'll notice there's only a sort of left-handed turn, they won't give it to us. Okay, there are certain things they will not do, they're not going to put a light, and quite frankly, I don't think we want a light every three blocks.
No, I know...
You don't want a stop sign every three blocks.
Yeah, right, I should point out, it's county, we can't install traffic lights, counties.
No, I know, but can we put pressure on Nassau County, because, for example, they...
We enjoyed and tried and tried.
They tried to be...
It took a long time to get the yellow blinking light. Yeah, honestly, the best thing that all the residents can do right now is petition, um, Hannan and Rock. That is the single most effective thing we can do right now, for them to enact the legislation that would allow us to act.
When, what, what's the timeframe on that? I mean, like, what, when are they going to, like, take all of this public comment, all of these people, and...
Hopefully, when there's enough signatures and there's enough letters, this is something that they would...
There's no, like, deadline?
No, no, you suggest your emails, and please have them this quickly. We're bringing it up, and we're stirring the pot, is why it's making, it's been a news day in a couple places, and unfortunately, I think their current comments were a little bit, you know, indifferent to it. So unless the residents here really show some sort of, uh, um, you know, direction that we want to go, they're, you know, they, they don't act, they're not, well, there's no deadline, unless we drum up enough support. So I would say the best thing you can do is go home and tell your friends and neighbors to shoot an email, it could take a few minutes, and, you know...
Does the home rule, does that allow us, is that only for speed cameras, or is that for just any measures we deem?
That's the speed cameras. As far as getting a line on a county road, I can tell you in, in Central, we just went through it on Cathedral and Third, and it was a very lengthy process. That's all I can tell you, and it's all we talked about for, I think, 18 months, in the CPOA meetings, for simple time.
So, that, that's what I would like to try to do with my stretches through it, is, you know, just get this process moving on.
There, there's something also to be said about the, um, the, the speed cameras, and, you know, they're portable. I'm not sure if you've been keeping up to it, but, you know, a, a light is a very permanent fixture. It, it really becomes something that changes the look of the roads in Garden City. I've lived here my whole life, okay? Now, if you told me when I was 12 that Cathedral Avenue would have a light pretty much on every corner, I would have told you you were nuts. No one used to even drive through Central. That was the place you could play street hockey on, any of those roads, okay, uninterrupted. So the, what the cameras do afford is a certain amount of non-permanence, while still getting the desired, you know, reduction in speed. Uh, I don't see a downside to them unless, you know, you really want to speed, so I don't know why anyone would object, but...
Yeah, I mean, because it doesn't, it doesn't actually get people to stop if they don't want to. They're like, fine, I'll get a ticket, I don't mind, you know, I'm not going to stop.
I'm just wondering, what is the track record on our community to apply for this, that as we are now in the process of doing it? Have they had success, how long would it take, and so forth?
No, no one has them except New York City.
Oh.
Yeah. Well, speed cameras, 140, yes, there are cameras everywhere, so... I'll get your name, if you are really hot for this, and it'd be appreciated, please get your neighbors, get your friends to tell them. Just send a simple two-line email, that's all it takes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Daryl Smith, Pine Street, uh, a couple of things I'll go through quickly because I noticed late. One, I want to thank the people that provided us with input, that is, me with input. I quoted a plan, uh, at least our recommendations for the white parking lot, which the board has discussed in the past, in terms of future improvements and enhancements, and people like Althea, Kathy Oro, Bill Velma, Cecilia, Barbara Ruggio, the Police Department, Department of Public Works, all added input to what was sent to Kevin. And hopefully that can be considered in the budget process. In the budget process also, um, the fact that the centennial of the formation of Garden City, as the letter's right behind the mayor indicates, happens next year. Uh, that centennial, uh, to the mayor's good direction and the board's compliance, is setting up a commission to work on this. I believe that, uh, the budget process should have a seat at the table, or at least a minor one, to make some presentations. Before that, I think, as the mayor had asked there for the centennial of the 42nd Rainbow Division back in August, if we're in other, other projects that can be put into the works, that can create the goodwill, and the sense of togetherness that that particular ceremony in August provided. We have some projects coming up, but they need some agenda attention, they need some possible financing. We're looking at alternative methods, we're also seeking volunteers, I'm hoping to press and carry that. We're talking to the Boy Scouts, and I'd like to talk with Spencer Anderson later, if he's still involved with that. Uh, possibly getting some of the ambassadors, uh, we had some of these young adults work with us on the centennial, 42nd, and they will highly help folks, providing them with leads to the Garden City High School, and hopefully help end the college issues. Um, we have a couple of plans that I'll just go through by name, so you can tick them around in your head. One of them is the possible placing of plaques on certain buildings of historical note. This does not indicate that this then becomes an historical building, but just like New York has a bronze plaque indicating that this particular building was the site of the Triangle, where a search factured back, uh, disaster back in the fall of 1912. Um, we believe that will add to the value and the quality of the village in having something like that. Um, another thing we're working on, and I, this is an invitation. Double Day, when they have the corporate offices here, have two marvelous bronze plaques dedicated to the men and women of Double Day, the majority of which were Garden City residents, that served in World War I and World War II, some perished there. Those plaques have had a thugger since Double Day left the community. They're currently in storage, the Garden City Historical Society has made a gracious gifting of them to the village if they can be found to be placed in a better situation than where they're currently located in, which does not give them, which are almost works of art for those who have seen it.
This, the backyard, outside?
That's correct. Um, some trustees are aware of this already, others have taken my invitation to see these plaques and explore possibilities of setting them in a better setting. I invite the other trustees, I don't have all your emails, uh, I will work with you, and I think the trustees will, it took maybe, what, five, 10 minutes to get them to have a better sense, so when this comes down to it, we're all better aware. Frankly, we've gotten some very good ideas from the trustees, who have seen the plaques, on how we can proceed on that. Um, that's basically it. One other thing that we do have coming up, which I would like to have some budget review on, uh, and that would be for Bill Velma to present a project to digitalize Garden City news. The records of this paper going back to its inception on paper format, uh, that, as you know, is not the long-term solution. The digitization of these is possible, and, uh, that should be considered at least in a proportional way to accomplish what is a multi-decade task. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else with an argument or issue they'd like to discuss? Nothing? Can we get a motion to adjourn? The Jelani makes that motion, can I get a second? Deputy Mayor DeMao makes that motion, all is in favor? Jeremy, Agnes, thank you very much, thanks for coming.